Call to order, the Monday, September 8th regular meeting of Plymouth Township Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of announcements. First of all, council met in an executive session on September the 2nd, 2025, to discuss collective bargaining and potential litigation matters. Given our fantastic police presence tonight, family guests and colleagues of Brad Fox, who as we all know.
(inaudible).
Okay. And, well, anyway, I want to, I want to take an item that's scheduled for later, an information item, and remember Brad Fox now. And Chief, if, I know you have some remarks to make. I think we all know that Officer Fox gave his life in act of service to Plymouth Township, leaving behind a family. Thank you.
On the evening of Thursday, September 13th, 2012, K-9 Officer Brad Fox was on duty and assisting at the scene of a motor vehicle crash, while at the scene of this accident, another vehicle later found to be stolen recklessly sped by and nearly struck him and his fellow officers. Officer Fox pursued the vehicles that raced away, forcing other motorists off the roadway, eventually striking another vehicle. The suspect exited his vehicle while still moving and fled on foot into an area densely overgrown with vegetation affording him concealment. Officer Fox, with partner Nick by his side, pursued him through the undergrowth where the suspect, armed with a semi-automatic weapon, later determined to have been acquired illegally through a straw purchase, ambushed Brad. Officer Fox was mortally shot, and Nick, although wounded, stayed by Brad's side until his fellow officers could locate him. Officer Fox was a five-year veteran of the Plymouth Township Police Department. He was murdered on the eve of his 35th birthday, leaving behind his wife, their one-year-old daughter, and a son who has yet to be born. He was survived by his mother, father, and brother, as well as his sisters and brothers in blue. Officer Fox was a Marine who served two combat tours in Iraq. He was a loving husband, father, and son. He was a hero and will be forever missed by us all. Please join me in a moment of silence as we honor our brother Brad. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Merciades. Thank you, officers, and everyone else who has come here tonight to remember Brad Fox. If any of you need to leave to get back to your jobs and families, we'll take a moment to let you leave now unless anybody would like to make some further remarks. I don't think any of us will forget that day. If you were living in Plymouth that day, you knew it. Thank you, Chief. And at this point, I am going to turn the meeting over for a zoning map amendment application, public hearing, and that hearing will be conducted by our solicitor, Michael Clark.
Thank you. If we could have a motion to open the public hearing?
All moved. I second the motion to open the hearing. Take a roll call vote, Mike?
If it's all in favor, it'd be sufficient.
All in favor to open this hearing?
In favor.
In favor. All right. Thank you.
This is a public hearing for a zoning map amendment application, 523, 525, 527, and 531 Plymouth Road. The applicant is present this evening, and the property owner, I should say, is present this evening, represented by Council, Kristin Pianto Esquire. And before I turn it over to Ms. Pianto, I'm going to mark a couple of exhibits. Township 1 will be the affidavit of publication indicating that the public notice of this hearing was advertised in the Times Herald and the Times Herald Digital Edition on August 26, 2025, and again on 9/1/2025, and that again will be Township 1. Township 2 will be a copy of the public notice indicating that this hearing would take place and what the basis of the ordinance amendment is. Township 3 will be a voluntary declaration of restrictive covenant that Ms. Pianto will speak about during the hearing. Township 4 is the review letter from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Township 5 is the review letter from the Plymouth Township Planning Agency. Township 6 is photographs, a series of photographs of the posting of the neighboring properties, and there are one, two, three, four photo, excuse me, five photographs of neighboring properties. And Township 7 will be a map that has been created by the township showing the areas where the properties have been posted. As I indicated, the property owner is represented by Kristin Pianto Esquire. Ms. Pianto will turn it over to you to present the application and any witnesses you'd like to present.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Good evening. It's nice to see you all. As you know, I represent the applicant. Sal Peon is sitting next to me. I'm going to let Sal do most of the talking. He has a presentation to present to you. I've presented an application for a rezoning of the parcels that are the subject of this hearing. As you know, the property that we're here to talk about consists or has four vacant buildings, vacant office buildings. And as I've said to you, as we presented this in sketch format earlier this year, and again at your planning agency across the region, we have been revitalizing and redeveloping vacant office buildings in commercial areas. We have a housing crisis in Montgomery County and across Pennsylvania, and we're here to see if we can address both of those issues with this application. The rezoning that we're asking is a straight rezoning to the de-residential district. We're asking for no text amendments or any changes to the de-residential. In looking at the applicable unit maximum that could be developed on the property, it is greater than what we are going to show you on our plan. We have done our due diligence with our engineer. Clearly, this plan has not been engineered, as we would get to, in a full land development application, but we have a pretty good idea of what the maximum density would be. And we have, as Mr. Clark indicated, forwarded to your solicitor a voluntary deed restriction whereby we would limit ourselves to the units that you see on that plan, a maximum of 159 units, whereas the ordinance would permit upwards of 240 units by right. So that is our promise, the voluntary restriction. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sal because he'll cover the basis and reasons why we think this is a great idea and hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin. Good evening.
That's not a microphone. That's my recorder.
Oh, I thought that was moving the screen.
Who's doing the clicking? You, Matt?
Should I swear in?
Yeah, that'd probably be appropriate. We're going to have you sworn in, Mr. Peon.
Okay.
Would you state and spell your full name?
Salvador Jean Peon.
Did you spell your last name?
P is in Paul, A O N is Nicholas, E.
Do you solemnly swear to testimony about the issue with the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And just before we start, Matt Hammond from Traffic Planning and Design is here as well. We don't plan on calling him, but he's here for questions. If anyone has any, we can certainly call Matt up. And Mr. West, you're gonna?
I will.
All right. We'll just indicate when you want to move forward, okay?
Thank you. Once again, good evening. Thanks for having us. We have been here before you a few times now, originally back in May of 2024, and then again in April of 2025. We saw the Planning Commission on July 2nd of this year when they recommended that the property be rezoned, and we saw you last week as well, on September 2nd, for a follow-up leading up to today's meeting. We, Matt, one slide, please. So as Kristin mentioned, we're here to talk about the rezoning of 525, 523, 527, and 531 Plymouth Road. Looking at the screen before you, kind of in the center of the screen outlined in red are five office buildings. That is the entire site. The building closest to Plymouth Road, which runs from your top left to middle-right, is 521 Plymouth Road. That is owned by Mission Kids. That is not part of our application. Next slide, Matt, please. Zooming in, again, the building that is marked USI Insurance, that is now Mission Kids. They own the property. The other four buildings across the middle of the screen are what we are here to request a rezoning for and to propose a redevelopment. Overall, the site is 38 acres, plus or minus, and the five buildings that you see before you total 185,000 square feet. It's important to point out that there is a current approval of the site that EQT Real Estate has received and has maintained, where the two buildings to the low right portion of the site, close to the Pennsylvania Turnpike, would be demolished, leaving three single office buildings totaling 111,000 square feet. That includes the Mission Kids building. In place of the two buildings to the bottom, and for reference, those are 527 and 5, 525 and 527 Plymouth Road. A new office building that is seven stories and 245,000 square feet could be built for a total of 354,000 square feet of office space. When, next slide, please. When we start to work on a new project in a new community, we try to be thoughtful about how we approach it. It's not just about how many lots or how many units we can put on a plan. And the first place that's always a good place to look is comprehensive plans. There are usually two that we go by, one from the county and one from the township. What you see before you is an excerpt from Monco 2040, which was adopted a few years back, and this area, or our particular site, is considered to be a regional mixed-use center. The primary focus of that is it's a suburban core with significant retail, office, and residential land uses. It expands beyond just the subject property that we're here to talk about this evening. One of the recommended uses are multifamily and townhomes. So I'll, of course, emphasize the townhome portion of this recommendation by the county. The letter dated August 1st from the Montgomery County Planning Commission was admitted as record. The county did recommend a map amendment for this property. Also, we look at the county's comprehensive plan. I'm sorry I don't have a slide for it, but here it is. Excuse me, the township's comprehensive plan, Plymouth 2040. And Plymouth 2040 mentioned a few things that are relevant. First of all, there are currently about 15 and a half percent of the total homes in the township are townhomes. It's noted that they are an attractive housing choice, and some important statistics from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission are noted, that when the comprehensive plan was adopted, it was anticipated that there would be an additional 2,281 more people moving into Plymouth Township by 2045. The recommended support for those people would be an additional 1,410 housing units by that same year, 2045. At the time it was adopted, it would be 47 housing units per year. There are a number of recommendations in the end of the comprehensive plan recommendation number three states that the township will provide or will strive to provide sufficient housing opportunities to meet the needs of the forecasted housing growth. Next slide, please. This is a map of Montgomery County. Circled in red is the area of Plymouth Township that I mentioned on the Monco 2040 map that calls for this area to be a regional mixed-use center. Next slide, please. So the third thing that we always look at is the township zoning map, what's happening around the site. This is the entire map of the whole township. Next slide, please. And what we do when we look at it is to see if, what would make sense? And a common term that we go by is transitions. What are the transitions in the area? Because in our area, this part of Montgomery County, a lot of the projects that we do or another developer might do are considered infill, and township zoning plans and zoning maps were drafted many, many years ago. And over those years, times have changed and needs have changed, and we go through different cycles. So looking at this zoomed-in portion of the zoning map, right in the center of the screen, you'll see a highlight on Office Laboratory, and it's shaped kind of like an arrow, property outlined in red. That is the site that we're talking about for the most part today. Kind of running from, from upper left to lower right is the Pennsylvania Turnpike that creates a divide through the township. And starting in the, let's call it the top left, you have some industrial use, and coming down along the turnpike, you'll see de-residential, that's Donna Drive and Ashley Way. The Pico power lines run through there. There's a very small industrial site off of North Gravers Road, and then you have the site that we are here to talk about this evening. So I'll note that the de-residential at Donna Drive and Ashley Way are very, very close, almost contiguous. Continuing along the Pennsylvania Turnpike, there's the Sussex Square Apartments, Zone Residential Special, and then you have Interchange, and there's some additional limited industrial by the turnpike's exit ramp and on-ramp. So if you, then, sorry, to the top of the page is B Residential and A Residential. So when we try to look at planning, when planners look at planning, or when I look at planning, we try to create a transition of uses when they might be applicable and make sense. So looking at an interchange in industrial use, going to an apartment use, and then to this property, which could be de-residential, then leading to B Residential, and then A Residential, would be a logical transition of uses across this area. Next slide, please. So this is our sketch plan that we put together, and I don't want to use the term sketch plan too loosely because we did put a lot of thought into it to try to make it a plan that is what I would consider more realistic and not just houses thrown on a piece of paper to get something in front of you. What we are showing on the very top is the existing Office Laboratory District that would remain, and that is the Mission Kids property. If you're looking at the page or at the plan, to the left of that is the B Residential site, that's Alexander Drive, and then Plymouth Road is at the top. What's not in the screen is Plymouth Elementary School. Shaded to your right, next to the Mission Kids building, is Sussex Square Apartments. As I mentioned earlier, the whole site is 30, sorry, 38 acres, plus or minus. The part that we are looking to rezone and redevelop is 29 and a half acres, plus or minus. This plan shows 159 townhouses. There are two different unit types. They would all be three to four bedrooms, two and a half to three and a half bathrooms, and one to two-car garages. I mentioned two unit types. The first is the type that is closer to the Pennsylvania Turnpike. They would be a three-story unit, they're slightly smaller units. The garage would be on the lower, on the first level, and then living space above that with bedrooms above that. They would be approximately 2,250 square feet to 2,400 square feet. And then closer to Alexander Drive and the B Residential, we would transition to a more traditional two-story townhome that's slightly wider at 26 feet and deeper at 54 feet, possibly up to 60 feet deep, and they would be in the range of 2,250, 2,300, up to 2,500 square We spent a lot of time looking at stormwater, looking at this plan, the top right corner of the site between the Sussex Square Apartments and Pennsylvania Turnpike, that's an existing stormwater area, so we would propose to expand that space, and there are other stormwater areas on the site to address the current stormwater needs should this plan be something that we take into land development. At the bottom of the page is North Gravers Road. Currently, that entrance off of North Gravers Road is right at the beginning of the bend. It's in the bend of the road. We would look to move that closer to the Pico power lines or plan left as you're, as you're looking at it, to provide better site distance. And last but not least, an important thing to note, this plan shows sidewalk on almost the entire community. From past meetings and discussions with the planning agency and with you, we understand that sidewalk on both sides of all streets is very important, so that would be something we would include. In the past, there's been a question about where the accesses for our site would be. It's not only on North Gravers Road. The access would be shared going out to Plymouth Road as well, so there would be two points of access for the project. Oh, yes, thank you. There's an odd-shaped finger between the Mission Kids building, which again is noted as existing Office Laboratory, and the B Residential District. It goes from the lower portion of the site where you see our proposed units all the way out to Plymouth Road. It's about a 50-foot wide strip. That is not a trail, that's not a sidewalk. That is currently a pretty well-buffered portion of the property between Mission Kids and the homes on Alexander Drive. We are not proposing to develop that area. The vegetation that is in there would remain. There's an emergency access for Alexander Drive over to the Mission Kids building. That would not be disturbed. The funny little line that you see, there's setbacks that are, would be required per the township ordinance, so to avoid any confusion, that's not going to be developed, not proposed to be developed, excuse me. The township's de-residential zoning district permits eight dwelling units per developable acre. The plan that you see before you only proposes 5.35 dwelling units per gross acre and 6.88 dwelling units per developable acre. This plan is zoning compliant from everything we can see. We are not requesting or suggesting any text amendments to the de-residential district. We would strive to develop it as close as to what you see in front of you. Another important thing that we put a lot of thought into is parking. A lot of times, when you get a more populated community such as this one, it can be a challenge to address the parking requirements, and the township's ordinance requires that all the parking be done in such a way that you don't have to move a car to get to another one. So for example, if you have a one-car garage and you have a driveway in front of that garage, of course, the garage cannot be counted towards your parking because of the potential that a car sitting in the driveway would block the car in the garage. I hope that makes sense. So what we did was, number one, we have not counted any of the garages in our parking counts, and number two, we have spread the parking around the community so that we're not just complying with the ordinance to meet the need of the number of parking spaces, but we've spread them out so that you don't have long distances between parking spaces and other homes. When there's that birthday party, when the Eagles win the Super Bowl again and we're all celebrating, when we have, you know, a family gathering for the holidays, you don't have inconvenient parking leading to many cars parked in the streets. I had mentioned at the top of the screen, and the plan is Mission Kids Office at 521. We've met with them. They support the project. We have even gone as far as preparing and fully executing an agreement with Mission Kids that should this project be approved, the responsibilities would be shared for the common roadway, among other features such as landscaping and signage. The internal physical buffers between our proposed project and theirs would be increased, which was very important to them, and we are not proposing to change their property at all, which they're very happy about, and what we assume would be our association would be taking care of the majority of that responsibility of maintenance with Mission Kids. Next slide, please. So once we drew the plan, we thought it was important to get an understanding of coverage comparisons between what is there today and what we are proposing. So impervious coverage, which is driveways, roadways, sidewalk, there's a reduction in the impervious coverage between what is there today to what we're proposing of 81,000 square feet, which is almost two acres. That's a reduction of from 42.4% to 36.7%, where 50% is permitted by ordinance, a reduction of 5.7%. There is an increase in building coverage slightly, from 11.8% to 14.6%, however, the ordinance under de-residential permits a 35% building coverage, so we are far, far below that requirement. Green space increases from 57.6% to 63.3%, almost 60,000 square feet, almost an acre and a half of additional green space, and we are providing 28.3% open space when 20% is required. That's non-impervious cover, which I described previously, and, but it also includes non-stormwater facilities, so stormwater basins are not in that percentage. I explained to you the parking previously and how we came about it. 350 parking spaces are required and 350 are proposed, and again, that does not include Next slide, please. Traffic, it's always, 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 always something to consider, not just here in Plymouth Township, but anywhere in this portion of Montgomery County. We are an old county, we are an old, older township, close to Philadelphia, developed a long time ago. Office generates more traffic than residential, and if we were to, what we did was we compared the existing site to our current proposal. We compared the previously approved expansion of the office to our current proposal, and we did this using the weekday AM. And we did this using the weekday AM, the weekday PM, the average weekday trips. At the bottom of the screen in front of you, you'll see there are totals and breakdowns. If we compare our current proposal to the existing site today, there is a reduction in the average weekday trip of three hundred and fifty cars per day. If we compare it to the previously approved proposal, expanding the office, there are, is a reduction in the number of trips of more than two thousand cars per day. Next slide, please. We also took a look at the real estate taxes. EQT Real Estate has appealed taxes because of their lack of occupancy. Montgomery County approved the reassessment. If I look at the taxes that were paid for 2024 County and Township and 2024, '25 school taxes, they were thirty-eight, almost thirty-nine thousand and a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars respectively. I, obviously, this project is not built yet, so there are no exact tax base, but if I use Cold Point Village, which is a project we built a few years back at the corner of Butler Pike and Plymouth Road, where the assessed value translates to a today value or 2024 value of six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars and change, we would generate a total tax base for the township of more than one million, one hundred thousand dollars. Comparing those two, that's almost an increase in the tax base of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Next slide, please. Just to give you an idea of what could be built, I had mentioned that there are two unit types. This is one of them. This is the three-story garage under-unit. It's what we built off of Butler Pike, known as Village Station behind the CVS. This is, again, this is what we built there. It's not an exact representation of the architecture of what we built here. If this were built here, we would probably individualize the unit architecture a little bit more, have a little bit more detail in the roof lines on the front of the houses. These units, again, would be located closer to the Turnpike, and this is the smaller of the two footprints. Next slide to show an idea of what the insides look. You can skip through these. You can see they're nice and open, which is what people are looking for today. This would be the other type of footprint and home we are building, slightly larger footprint at twenty-six by fifty-four, twenty-six by sixty. We are currently building this project, a project over in Horseshoe Township, not far away, with these exact units. They have been extremely well-received, really great layouts, nice and open, and these are slightly larger, closer to the homes on Alexander Drive. And we did that because those homes have a higher value. We figure to have a unit mix to support those values a little bit more. Probably more for a move-up buyer, more than a first-time buyer. And there's an interior rendering of what these units look like as well. Again, you can see nice and open, great room living space. And that concludes all the facts and figures. I'm sure there's some questions. We're happy to answer them, but to summarize, should you be agreeable to rezoning the property and approving the map amendment, what we would be able to develop would provide more open space and green space, less traffic, higher tax revenue, and no chance of blight in the township, which we're seeing in other areas.
Before I turn it over, just some housekeeping. Sal, the applicant is S. Peon Inc., we have Sal Peon Builders on the slides. What is your capacity with the company?
I'm president of the company.
Okay, and how long has Sal Peon Builders been in business?
Fifty-three years, fifty-four years, long time.
And your experience in Plymouth Township, you mentioned a couple developments.
We've built a number of developments in Plymouth Township, most recently Plymouth Valley Estates, which is the community of Alexander Drive and Sebastian Lane, Cold Point Village at Plymouth Road and Butler Pike, the CVS at Plymouth Road and Butler Pike, Village Station behind that. A project we built back in the early 2000s called Hillcrest Glen, which was a combination of townhomes and singles off of Caldwell Lane and Hillcrest Drive.
Mr. Clark, if we could mark the PowerPoint presentation as A1, applicant 1, and I submitted a letter with attachments and enclosures, including the ordinance itself, if we could do that collectively as A2, that would be great?
Fine.
Okay, all right, and that's all I have, we're open for questions, thank you.
If I could ask just a couple of quick questions, and then we can open it up for public comment, I would suggest that perhaps the board save their questions until after a public comment. And the one question may be for you, Ms. Peantio. If the board were to grant this map amendment, does that mean Mr. Peon can put a shovel in dirt next week on this project?
That is a very good question, absolutely not. We would probably be, he'll kick me, eighteen months to two years away from something like that. In the event the rezoning happens, then the engineers get to work and do a full land development application with engineered plans that need to be submitted, reviewed by township staff and consultants, review letters are generated, then it goes through the public process here, obviously, through your planning agency, back here before council, traffic would be reviewed, lighting, stormwater management, landscaping, the configuration, connectivity, things like that would all be reviewed, also a public process. The county would get another review, and the actual moving of the earth and the development of the ground, and that picture would come to life in a 3D style through that process. And we'd also have to go through the county conservation district for all, for our MPDES permit and all the stormwater design, so a very long process ahead of us.
And that would be the time, again, if you were to receive these approvals, that the full traffic study would be done, a full stormwater study would be done, all of those issues would be completed and have to be submitted to the township for our, the consultants of the township to review, correct?
That's correct. That's a very arduous and expensive process. We need the zoning in place before we would even start that kind of design and engineering, but yes, that's true.
And Mr. Peon mentioned a little bit about traffic, and there was a slide about traffic. Do we know how, what the occupancy rate is on these buildings right now?
Approximately, yes. Excuse me. Each building is about thirty-six thousand square feet, I believe. There is currently, between two buildings in total, about twenty-five thousand square feet currently leased. And that would be twenty-five thousand square feet out of a hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
So the traffic count that you mentioned earlier, that's based on what it would generate if it were fully occupied, not what it's generating now?
That is correct.
Okay, so it may not be generating the traffic that it would be at full occupancy, correct?
Correct.
So when you say the residential will be less than the office, it's not necessarily what it's generating today, but what it could at full occupancy of the office development?
That is correct.
Okay. We're now going to open it up for public comment. One of the things that I wanted to make sure everyone understood, and it's the reason we asked Ms. Peantio these questions, is there are certain aspects of this that if this gets approved will be, come out during the land development process. If you have questions, if you live nearby and you have questions about lighting or stormwater, or even some of the traffic issues, those are not necessarily issues that we may have answers, or they may have answers. They're not a whole separate process if this gets approved this evening that the applicant will have to go through. This is your opportunity to make comment. Ms. Peantio will determine which questions she'll be, try to answer, if you have questions for them and which they may not have information on. And then at that point in time, the board will, will ask questions of Mr. Peon, perhaps Mr. Hammond, and Ms. Peantio. So, you know, probably the easiest way to do this is, if there's anyone in the front row who wants to make public comment, if there's anyone in the second row on this side over here who wants to make public comment, raise your hand and please come to the podium, identify yourself, and just let us know if you're a resident of Plymouth Township.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Peon. Thank you, members of the community. My name is Mitch Yanak. I live at 112 Nursery Drive, been a member of this community for five years. There's some concerns that I have, and I'm sure a lot of people's rooms share too. One is reduced number of cars that's anticipated. Most of those locations aren't unoccupied right now. As you pointed out, sir, I don't know how one can extract that the lower traffic in that area once the residential community goes in, because there's no traffic now. The other concern I have is, is some of the parents are with me here, our children go to school, they take buses on Nursery Drive, and right now, especially in that neighborhood, there's a lot of traffic that goes there that is speeding. When the buses come, they do stop, the police do a great job, I'm not blaming the police for this, because they're going to have their hands full. So with that increasing amount of people, a hundred and forty-nine townhouses coming in, how many people will be coming and going at times the buses are going? What impact is that going to have on the safety of the kids trying to go on the bus? You look at Action News last week, they did a report about Delaware County, about buses being compromised by vehicles going around them. The other concern I have, council members, is what's it going to do to our water pressure? When you start putting a hundred and forty-nine more townhouses in, what impact is that going to have on the residents here with water pressure? The other thing is the egress and access routes, if I understood Mr. Peon right, it's only going to be two location, you can get in and out.
Yeah, what's wrong?
So that's going, really stalemate traffic on Nursery Drive, excuse me, not Nursery Drive, on, uh, thank you, Gravers Lane, and also on Plymouth. So with only two access points, and if there's a major disaster, that's going to cause a lot of headaches for the police department. Why do I say that? I was a policeman for forty years, so I have some experience with traffic patterns, and I understand what the chief is going to put up with. The other concern that I have is, you mentioned a seven-story building, possibility, but I didn't hear any explanation of what that might be used for, of what is going to be housed in that building, what type of businesses, how much more traffic is that going to bring?
That has been previously approved on that site. What Mr. Peon is proposing would be in lieu of that seven-story.
Okay, thank, I misunderstood that, so thank you for clarifying that for me. And also, for a fire department personnel, I'm sure you're planning on a list where all the hydrants are going to be, and if there was a major disaster there, what impact that would have and water pressure for other residential areas. So, I know there's a lot to consider, I think it's great that you're building, that people are coming into the area. The other thing I think I'm concerned with is, long-term, what's that going to do to our tax assessment? What's, you know, even though it says it's going to bring in a million dollars, let's face it, you're going to need probably to expand the school sometime. If additional people come into this neighborhood, additional children go to school, is there enough room at Plymouth Elementary? What impact that could have in future on that school? Are they going to need to expand? Are they needing to have more teachers? Are there need to have more buses? And what about the services of that community? What about trash pickup? What about other services, the highway patrol, whatever it may be? It's going to have an impact on everybody here. I'm sure other people have comments, but I want to echo this and share this, because my main concern is, I don't know where the traffic analysis came from, what, less traffic, but I don't see that. I don't see that, because there's no traffic now from those buildings. And the other thing is, when the traffic patterns are discussed in the future with traffic engineers, hopefully, there's, as I'm saying, slowdown, you know, maybe some traffic signals too, to control traffic patterns. There's some of my concerns. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your attention, thank you, Mr. Peon.
Yank.
Yes, Y-A-N-A-K.
Thank you.
First name Mitch, MITCH. Thank you.
Anyone else in the second row over here?
Hi there, my name's Corey Babka, CEO of RBY, B-A-B-K-A, last name, 102 Nursery Drive. Plymouth Township President now for fifteen years. I was actually, the reason I came tonight, I was actually here ten, twelve years ago with the Driscoll tract, when we were doing that one as well. So I remember the dance, and I remember the song, I danced back and forth and how we went through that. It was originally townhomes, it was duplexes, then it became single homes, and they're beautiful, they're great. But I want to say I'm a realist in the fact that I think something will happen to this area. Like, I mean, right now, it's four eyesore, they redo it and kind of redo it, they kind of stopped, and they painted, they didn't paint, you know, those buildings right there, they're there. They're not great, I think we all know that, and with today's day and age with remote work and all that, whether they're rented or not, I don't, we all know there's no one in there, but there's probably five cars a day that you can kind of see in this parking lot. So realistically, I know something's going to happen with this, it's probably, and I trust, you know, Mr. Peon, what he's done with the past and the other land that he's had. My question actually becomes, are there other plans? Like, are we going to do this, this dance where we kind of reject the townhomes, and then we come back and say, oh, what other plans do we have, or we can do the single homes? Like, are there other Plan Bs at this point, I guess is what my question would be for Mr. Peon? Or, and are we considering that as well? If we don't reject, or if we do reject it, or we think about something else, is there a, again, a Plan B or another, this is kind of my question.
Don't talk.
Kind of cut to the chase instead.
Don't talk.
Think about that from the township's end. Can I ask her, is there, is there an answer to that, that I guess someone would have?
Well, is your question...
My question, I guess, would be...
This is changing this to D residential.
Correct.
So the applicant, the applicant can, the property owner can do anything that is permitted in the D residential.
So my question for the council would be, has, if there was be a rejection to a D residential, would we consider an A or a B, as was done before? I mean, that's probably way down the road for you, but that's why I'm also kind of over this way and asking Mr. Peon, if that gets rejected, do you have further plans for a B or an A residential zone?
Right now, we're really hopeful that council considers and adopts this plan for the D residential, so we can proceed with the townhouses.
So that's, so comment would just be echoing what Mitch would say, it's a lot of homes, it's a lot of areas. I think most people in here, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but I know myself, I'm a realist in the fact something's going to happen there, which we welcome, I think, instead of the four buildings that are not doing anything. But I would appreciate instead of consideration of the A or the B that we had before. Same thing that happened ten, twelve years ago.
Is there anyone else in the second row over on this side who wishes to speak?
Is there anyone in the second row over here? Good evening, I'm Lyndon Trembath, I'm a resident on Kenwood Drive.
Who's her name?
And I'm sure you've seen me up here before, as I'm a longtime, thirty-year resident of Plymouth. And just within the last five years, I have noticed a significant difference with the overcrowding, and I'm, traffic is at the top of my list, but also hospitals, doctors' offices, just getting help from PICO with the constant electrical issues we've had in our neighborhood, which I'll get to as well. I'm very concerned with the thought of adding a hundred and fifty-nine, well, plus, I heard there's a chance of even more condos to this overcrowded area, not to mention the thought of the traffic that's going to be from Mission Kids as well. Again, when I saw the traffic study, I couldn't help but to think, when I do cut through that area, there's no one around. So that must have been when the office complex was alive and well. Building this as well will stop the cut-through, so all that extra traffic will then be out on all the other roads, Plymouth Road, John Temple Pike as well. I leave my neighborhood in Plymouth Hills in the morning at seven-thirty, a fifteen, not even a quarter of a mile, would take me fifteen minutes right now, whereas before it was easy to get... it was easy to get off. Now, with added traffic coming off of Plymouth Road, well, I can't even imagine. It'd be easier just to walk to work in Westchester. Evening commute, just as bad, trying to get into my neighborhood from all the mall traffic that's blocking. Again, will be more cars on the road. Just within the last several years, on the other side of Plymouth Road, there has been a large apartment complex. I know you've mentioned a lot of these have been built by you, so I'm sure you're very well aware. There's the over 55 big building there, there's the CVS, there's the condos over on that side, and not to mention the mall that they're now building, all the apartments there. So I really, it's quite concerning that the wonderful place that Plymouth used to be has really become, has become overcrowded. Even just getting into the urgent care is a concern. Since the hospitals, again, doctors can't see it, they're not taking any patients, so there's only no place for us to go. Another big concern is, when I looked at the 2024 police report from Plymouth, it said service calls were up by 51%. Criminal arrests were up by 117%, and retail deaths were up by 332%. So just factor in all those added people at the new mall apartments, and now if this gets approved, just how stretched thin the police department will be. I'm just, and my main concern as well as all of these that I've mentioned, is that, you know, I'm in an older neighborhood of Plymouth Hills across from, you know, the mall area. The, we've had ongoing electrical issues that I've brought to council before, and it just keeps, you know, continuing to not be resolved. And now we are putting all time and effort into all these new builds, and I feel like we just kind of need to remember the middle-class, older neighborhoods that have been here for a while at Plymouth, and take those in consideration when we're stretching law resources a little too thin with all these different complexes being approved. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. My name's Rita Speira. S-P-E-R-A. Same as Linda and Mitch said, traffic is a nightmare. I live off of Plymouth Road. I don't know if anybody's head has ever tried to pull out of Plymouth Road, but it's dangerous. I'm going to dispute the study for traffic, because I don't think anybody's been in that office building since COVID. So I would say they're very inaccurate numbers, number one. Number two, when the development went up near the CVS on across the street from Germantown Pike, we had many sinkholes that totally disabled all of us. And I think the one sinkhole was out for almost a year. We couldn't access Plymouth Road. It took me 45 minutes to an hour to get to the high school. That's ridiculous. It's two miles away. It's a big concern. The schools have already been expanded. That's taxpayer money. Right now, currently in Plymouth Elementary, I think the first grade has eight classes. That's ridiculous. We're going to have to expand the schools. That's going to be more taxpayer money for us. All the schools, because they all get integrated to the 405 building, they all get integrated, you know, they're from fourth on, they're all together in one class size. That's a lot. That's a lot of money and resources right there. To Linda's point, doctor's appointments, my doctor's not even seeing any new patients because he can't. I can't get an appointment. I'm forced to go to urgent care. I have to wait at urgent care for hours. They don't help you. You then got to go to the ER. ER, you sit in the ER for two, three hours. I can go to main line and sit there as well, because they're inundated with hospitals that close from Delaware County. So that's a big thing. We should be able to have resources. I moved here to Plymouth Meeting 18 years ago. I moved out of the city of Philadelphia. I wanted to come to a town, not to a city. I left the city to not have all of that. Now, I can't get anywhere, can't pull out of my street. I don't know, are you proposing a traffic lane with all this? And also, we, a lot of us that live in this area, we cut through the office to get to the Metroplex, because if not, you got to go down Germantown Pike. It shouldn't take me a half hour to get to the food store. So there are a lot of my concerns. So, thank you for listening.
Anyone else in the second row? Anyone else in the third row on this side, please?
Good evening. Kevin Bisch, B-I-S-H, resident of Plymouth Township, resident of Plymouth Township for 13 years now. I'll try to be brief. It pains me to be up here in opposition to this project, because as Sal knows and remembers, I'm sure I was a sponsor reporter of the Plymouth Valley Estates. Sal was gracious enough to agree when I came in, and he remembered all that, I'm sure. But just to provide some context, for those of you who aren't here then, the members of council, who might not have been on the council then, it's apples and oranges. So the Driscoll Track is a vacant traffic land. There was a farm, there was something there. It was kind of inevitable that something would be built, right? We were starting to scratch. This is an existing office complex, right? And there's no need to change this anywhere. It's a functional office complex. It exists as is today. There's no smoking gun in the head of township to rezone this and develop. We don't have to do this. So I think comparing this to the Driscoll Track is a fair comparison. I'd also like to point out, you know, I have some remarks too, that thinking back to Mr. Pan's remarks, there was a couple of red areas in there that I wanted to flag, you know, to throw out 240 homes as potential, and we're being gracious and only doing 159. And that predicates that we approved giving D residential, and that we could build 240. So to compare 240 to 159, really isn't a fair comparison either, because it's all predicated on the argument we approved D, which we might not. Secondly, the dimension of the seven-story building that was approved in 2017, you know, that hasn't happened. It's not in the best interest of the property under EQT to build that. Nobody's building an office park out here now. And I would say that that's not going to happen. Instead, to use that as kind of a, you know, an underhanded threat that if you don't do this, you're going to get a seven-story office building, it's kind of low and gross. So with that, I would say here, two benefits and two costs. The only beneficiary of this rezoning are the property owner, EQT, and Mr. Pan. Neighbors bear the long-term costs. Increased traffic, spraying services, multi-year construction between the Driscoll Track Peters to build, and the noise in the litter and whatnot. And the permanent loss of the building flexibility, which I'll talk about. There's no legal obligation to rezone. Rezoning this is a discretionary act. There's no legal requirement for the township to change the zone, because an owner can't lease their office case. Market challenges in the commercial real estate market do not constitute a legal hardship. Permanent consequences. Rezoning the residential is, for most parks, permanent. Once commercial land is turned residential and houses are built, the land cannot practically revert to commercial use. You don't take down houses and put up commercial properties. It doesn't happen. Approving it for temporary commercial real estate market reasons, which is what we're looking at here, the commercial real estate market is in a slump. And we're talking about turning this to residential. Once we do this, it can never go back to commercial. Planning integrity. Under the Pennsylvania municipalities planning code section 303, zoning amendments must align with the township's comprehensive plan. If this area does not designate for medium-density residential, approval is inconsistent with the planning policy. Our zoning map lists this property in planned office park category, and the Plymouth 2040 guide emphasizes mixed-use commercial centers and connections to employment centers. A 100% residential townhouse project at a turnpike-adjacent office park cuts against that direction. If the future land use map doesn't specifically designate this parcel for medium-density housing, approving this rezoning would deviate from that plan, undermining long-range policy. Rezoning an isolated parcel for private gain versus spot zone, which can be challenged legally. Precedent policy risk. Approving this as a B for precedent. Other underperforming commercial properties, which share a plenty of this township, could demand similar rezoning, undermining long-range planning and zoning facility. As I mentioned, in 2017, Exeter received approval to replace two of the buildings for the five, seven-story office building. That never happened. I don't think it will happen. The landowner has had entitlements before and now to Akron. Why should be granting another even larger entitlement? Community impact. If your use is effective, park is quiet and long game, low traffic, and serves as a buffer between residential areas and busy roads. And as has been mentioned, the through street is very helpful in the neighborhood, keeps traffic off of Germantown Pike and Johnson Road. The traffic, as Mr. Clark pointed out, comparing the traffic study to the existing state is laughable. There is no traffic right now. You can go through that office park at 2:00 on Tuesday, and there's nobody there. So in closing, council's clear choice, support two private parties and these profits, or protect the public interest, preserve community character, and nothing but planning integrity. On behalf of concerned neighbors here, I urge you to reject zoning that amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else in the third row over here? I think, since a couple people have mentioned this, I think I want to clarify something that was said. And Mr. Hammond is here, who is the traffic engineer, and perhaps you may want to ask him this question at the end. The traffic counts that Mr. Peon referenced are not as they are today. They are what they would be if the office building was full. That's what they're basing their numbers on. How many would be generated, how many trips would be generated if the office park was full and as opposed to the residential? Not what they are now. Clearly, it's 25% vacant. Clearly, there is very little traffic coming out of that spot. But that question I asked of Mr. Peon is, the numbers that he showed, was that as it is today, or as it would be if the office park were full? And that's where the difference in those numbers is.
It's Bob De La Cor, N-D-E-L-A-C-O-Y, 905, what's your... I've lived here a long time. Sebastian Cork, whatever that road is called, no problem. Goes off into a nice little side street. Alexander, they're idiots. They pull into traffic, they don't care. You can see them coming, they don't even think to stop, because they think they have two feet. Going on to Plymouth Road is a disaster waiting to happen. It's only a matter of time before someone gets killed, and it'll be made. They're young, they move fast. I'm old, I don't move as fast. But I'd lay a white, and I did it to them. I have to, I have to jam a blade on them. They can't let them take that little, whatever you want to call that little section in the back there, what'd you call that section? The little...
Finger.
What is that?
Finger.
Finger.
Finger!
Oh, my God.
They're going to squeeze that little building out next to it. They're going to squeeze that little building that just got built under, which had a residential, but it's commercial. That's the little one in between. I don't understand that. But if you want to build a seven-story office building, you're replacing what you can't lease now. So they're not going to build it. But I see something being done. They're going to go against the schools, it's going to cost money. Every time I go, you guys raised the real estate tax last year, first time in 30-something years. Congratulations. Did you do it again? I forgot to look. And then you raised 10%, two years earlier than your income tax because of COVID. I didn't get it back, but I'm retiring. Keep charging. The parcels, are they going to, is there an HLA there now? Common area with the five buildings now?
Yes, sir.
Does Mission have an agreement with everybody that if they suddenly lose that section, they're going to get stuck in all of it?
Let's not get into that.
Or are they still being...
We're not prepared to address any of that at this point.
Okay. My question there had to do with, will they move their entranceway to the finger, or they're going to keep the entranceway it is now? Little kids don't drive, the parents might drop them off, but they're demo, what do you call them? They're ripping the building apart right now. There's no kids there, so I don't know if it's going to be busy or not. That's funny, it's got all the windows out. I don't know if that's permanent or not. I don't know how much traffic it'll generate, but hopefully they only have their little thing there with their own drive, but if they combine it, then it's going to be hell. Because parents love to get their kids to where they're going, get to work, and they just go to my neighborhood now, to the elementary school, to the middle school, with no regard for anything. They just speed on through. I mean, it's tempting. But I have no problem if they could put it on to the back street there. You know, as far as the curve goes, where they have that entrance now for the buildings, I can see really good, they're coming that way and this way. They move it over, I'm not going to see them fly down there. Where the road is now coming out, you can see them coming. And you notice going down or stop before you pull out. Yes, I cut through there too. All right, the other stuff I wrote down won't happen until you guys decide to talk more. I guess at that time I'll do a sewer, the water runoff. The existing seven-story building, did you approve it just for 527? Because that was a number on one of the handouts, I believe. Not 530, no, 2593. Or is there an option to do them later for another seven-story building?
Are you asking if the...
I'm asking the 527, it was on the plan.
I think it's two parcels that were part of the seven-story.
25 and 27.
It's down at the bottom there, close to the turnpike where people like to have them. The other concern was, I just saw where there's plans or in consideration also, Colwell and Ridge to rip out that office building part. The mall, I don't know what's happened at the mall with the 10-story building there, and got hit plans there, a thousand unit, not you. People had plans for 1,000 units, 400, I don't know what that is. But you're talking about 2,000 potential units or residents coming in. I forgot, you said residents or the units?
Residents.
Residents, okay.
Just look down your paper.
That's a lot of property. I don't have to take that into consideration. I would think you'd want to put a 55-plus community in there. No kids, they don't have to drive as much, and I don't. And I'll wait for the next plug in until then. But if you're going to approve it, I would not let them go onto Plymouth. That's another disaster waiting to happen. Alexander, maybe you go back door and put that on them, and go out the other direction to, you know, bump through the side street there. It will make Mission happy, because now they have to drive, they just lost half the township. All right, that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the third row on this side? Anyone else on the third row on this side of the... Anyone in the fourth row on this side?
Ronald Plant, Plymouth Township. Plant, P-L-A-N-T. I'm coming from a different angle, like you mentioned. The buildings are there, I'm figuring something's going to happen. And so I'm kind of speaking to you, but also to the committee. I think we need to also consider property for different demographics. You mentioned the housing crisis. I would think that the housing crisis is for multiple people, not just one demographic. And I'm in a situation where my daughters are about to reach, they're graduating college, so they're about to become fam, start their families and hopefully become homeowners. And I want them to be able to live near me, so I want them to be able to afford something within Plymouth Township. Same thing with, we moved my mother-in-law from Philadelphia out here, and we're losing all of our ranch houses out here. All of the ranches are getting bought up, and these big old buildings are being bought, I mean, being created. And so we won't have any place for any elders to live. And so we're getting ready to just be, we're just going to have just one demographic in this area. And I feel like, I moved to Plymouth for the variety and the diversity. And so I'm hoping, so not just with the building, I'm throwing that out to you as you, you know, consider building, but also with the committee. Any of these new projects that come in, we, I don't want to use the term affordable, because that may have a negative connotation, but we need to be able to, we need to be able to allow, I think, elders and then more first-time, like homeowners, to be able to purchase in that area. That's all I have.
Anyone else in the fourth row?
My name is Maurice Pellegren, 214, Dopperidge.
Please listen.
P-E-L-L-E-G-R-I-N. I moved up from Philadelphia 62 years ago into Plymouth. And right now, we live across the street. And I'm not happy with all the building. I don't like the traffic. I don't like all the deer living in my backyard. It's just, it's crazy, it's ridiculous. And I think most people are not happy with it. I'm sorry that a lot of people didn't show up, but too much traffic, too much, we're not gonna have enough police, we're not gonna have enough water, we're not gonna have enough utility services to, you know, to take care of all this. And then I have one question. Say, you said you're not gonna be able to put the shovel on the ground for another 18 months to two years. So if you say, okay, we're gonna change this residential to residential, but then they come over with their zoning and you don't like what they find, can we go back to commercial? Or does it stay residential, that's it?
This will be changed, the request is that this be changed to de-residential. It's a map amendment. The underlying zoning will still exist. He will have to go, not go through zoning, he'll have to go through land development unless, well, I spoke too soon, unless he proposes a plan that is not zoning compliant, then he'd have to go to the zoning hearing board.
But then, it would never be reversed?
The underlying zoning will still, will still exist. When you do, when you make a map amendment, when you change something for de-residential, they can, they can continue to use it for what it's being used now.
Well, I doubt that we don't change it.
Is there anyone in the fifth row?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Stein, S-T-E-I-N. Current Plymouth meeting, Plymouth Valley Estates resident, longtime Montgomery County resident. So when I was looking to move my family out of Philadelphia, we looked at a lot of garbage housing. There's a lot of things that cost what these townhomes might cost, the Plymouth Valley Estates cost, over 100 years old, you don't have a safe, you need bulb remigration and so. When we looked, we looked for a reputable builder. And a reputable builder in this area is South Hill. Now, this gentleman here raised a very important point. You raised a very important point. There's a housing crisis, that's not new. Middle housing is a huge issue. Both for people that don't have kids that want to move out here or stay here close to their parents, and people that need to downsize, in no offense to the older people, at some point you're gonna have to sell your home. Because you don't have four kids living there anymore. And the maintenance is a lot. There's not enough of those.
Mr. Stein, can you, can you address your comments to the board?
Oh, no, no, I was just like, trying to acknowledge.
Yeah, but, yeah, I understand, but yes, please.
So, we kind of had a two double-edged sword there, which these townhomes can help address. I cut through that area too. It's a great point by people. That is not reason to not develop it. The road is not going anywhere. There's not gonna be magical gates from the HOA. There's not gonna be some kind of way you can't pass through if you don't have an address. The points about the school, fantastic. The school does forecast. It's not like 1,000 kids are gonna show up at Plymouth Elementary tomorrow. The school will budget for this, as they've always done. I know there's a lot of kids there now, but they're capable of this. We have experts in the administration. At least I like to think so. My mom having been a teacher in the school district for 20-plus years. So that's on the schooling. Traffic, yeah, it's a pain. Our police force does a really good job every day pulling people over who're speeding through the school zone. There's nothing that precludes this council or zoning asking Mr. Peon, Peon, sorry, not Peon, asking Mr. Peon to contribute to community improvements. Pedestrianization in that area, it's what, 70 acres or so is, yeah? Am I misreading that? All the parcels are like 70 acres or so?
Thirty acres.
Thirty six, thank you. That's a lot of space. We don't have that much space. This opportunity in front of us, absent the mall, so we can make it even more friendly to the surrounding community, to take that pressure off some people raised about just more people being around. We've already done adaptive reuse in the area. We have Booney Brothers, we approved the pickleball court, don't personally use it, but people are gonna use it, people are engravers, we're gonna want these residents to use it, we're gonna want these residents to be able to buy our houses when my kids are off to college. We're gonna want these residents to help fill the school budget. When we forecast it, all of them, when all of them become Valley Estates, Cold Point and so on, and maybe the mall eventually move out. So we have to keep growing in this sense. I'm sure many of the good points that are made counter to this development were made for the houses that I currently live in with my family. But I don't see anyone complaining about the quality of people that are now filling up those kindergartens and first grades at Plymouth Elementary. So I appreciate the time, Mr. Peon. This looks like a nice place. You're an excellent builder, you know, you've been responsive in all of our stuff. So if this is gonna get developed, people, I just wanted to add in that we are fortunate that we have, you know, a Montgomery County resident. There's a lot of big corporations that could buy this place and will build really bad housing. And that'll be more headaches. All the headaches that you listed, that just won't be able to get addressed. At least we have someone who's part of the community. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Frank Johnson, I live in Narcissa Road. I've been a taxpayer for maybe 45 years in Plymouth Township. And I'm pretty sure the school taxes have gone up every year, okay? Every year. Now, of course, that area has been a residential. They changed Plymouth Valley to be residential. I think de-residential for that area is terrible because the traffic in this area is ridiculous, okay? You are changing the character of Plymouth Township with all this high density. And the township should not be only looking for revenue, okay? You gotta look at the quality of the residents that live here, okay? Instead of all these apartments, all this income that you're counting, because it has a burden with it. You have more children going to the schools. If somebody's gonna want to build a new school to service this, and the existing taxpayers are gonna have to pay for it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the last row on this side? Anyone in the fourth row on this side?
My name is Jim Matrak.
Please listen.
We moved up from Rox Farm, Monmouth area approximately 20 years ago. And I drive my son, I'm real familiar with the area because I'm teaching my son how to drive right now. And there's no one in the office building. So the comparative between the two is just not good. But also, that's a cut-through for everybody, which I agree with everybody. It's alleviating the traffic for people taking their kids to Plymouth High School and everything else. I drive my son every morning, it takes 35 to 45 minutes. I live right here, the off course, off Sandy Hill Road, or Terrace Road. It's 35 to 45 minutes. Any day to just go down Plymouth Road or Cotticross or get down to Germantown Avenue, it's really ridiculous. There's something I never talk about with these developments. My nephew has lived in a few townhouses. There's all the visitors to the townhouses. It's a big factor. No one ever speaks about when they're doing buildings. I went to school for architecture. So it's more than anybody realizes because he was talking about one car and a clock in another. So he's in a garage, he gets a parking spot. There's hardly any parking spots on all the streets because of the curb cuts. So my nephew lives up in the development. We go to visit him, you're driving around for 15, 20 minutes. And then you have to factor in visitors to the people that live there. And the visitors really factor in on weekends, weeknights, so you're gonna have, you're more prone to accidents, and you're more prone to, also, visitors create problems. Because you'll have children live there, you got young bucks coming in, there's, you know what it brings, right? Partying, everything else. And it's a big factor, the number of people. If it's 159 homes, you're gonna have 159 families. And also, you know, you base it on one car in the garage, one car on the pad up off of the curb cut. Everyone has two, three, four cars. If you have kids, you sometimes have five now. So the factors, the numbers that you point out are just a fallacy. They really are. And it just compounds with visitors too. And the compounding is like evenings and weekends. You know, it probably won't affect your school hour, like the ride that I had, but it's a lot of people that you have to add towards these numbers, a lot. Your numbers are so far off and inaccurate, it's, you know, it's absurd to me, when I think about it. So, that's my piece. All right? Thank you.
Anyone else in the fourth row?
Hi, my name is Tiffany, my name is Nora, N-O-I-S-C-E-N-N-I. I was born and raised here in Plymouth. And I see it changing a lot. Sorry. I don't mean to be emotional. Partly honoring Brad Fox has set me off. Thanks for including us, I appreciate that. But I've, I guess I lived here for 25 years, moved away and came back. And I know my siblings weren't able to afford to live in Plymouth in the eighties, so they're in neighboring communities and my nieces and nephews are even further afield. I, you know, I see what people mean about the traffic, but, you know, you go to stores, you just, I don't, I don't know how safe I do feel here because there is so many people here. They're just, I feel like we're having more of a quantity, we just can't get enough people here. I wish we could do like a quality, like maybe have nicer homes, you know, maybe something like a retirement area. I mean, old people are great, pretty close to that if not there. Or, you know, new homeowners. We need to, we need to make this a community. It's become not a community. And, you know, I get people don't live here that want to build here, but some of us have our roots here. So, yeah, I ask you guys to please make, keep us in mind and make the decisions for us. Yeah, my sister. I went to school for my uncle.
Anyone else in the fourth row? Anyone else in the last row? Please come forward.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Cory Blatstein, B-L-A-T-S-T-E-I-N. I'm a resident of both Valley Estates as well. And acknowledging that those of us, and not speak on behalf of all of our neighbors, but we are in a little bit of an awkward spot where we are benefiting from the approvals that previously took place for what was the Driscoll tract is now our homes. But we're also gonna be heavily impacted by any approval or decisions that are made here tonight. So I'm in agreement with two thoughts shared by one of our neighbors tonight, which seem to be in conflict with each other. First, if we approve this, the existing neighbors bear the future costs. And I don't think we discussed that enough in the presentation. There's a lot of focus on the actual project, understandably so, but I don't think we actually address the long-term costs to existing neighbors. Second, being a realist, not only is something going to happen on this site, but something should happen on this site. It's not a good use of space in our existing, in our township to have these vacant office buildings. But taking, taking those points together, I ask, my real ask here and for Mr. Peon and for the council, is that this conversation this evening, I mean, we've been talking about this for about an hour and a half so far, not just be looked at as, oh, we let the neighbors vent and then an approval was given and we just move on and build whatever we want. But this feedback is actually taken and implemented. I would hope that's what happens. So a couple points on that. So obviously, there's a lot of discussion tonight about traffic, that's been raised a number of times, and parking. Mr. Clark, I appreciate you clarifying a number of times. I think the opposition tonight and a lot of the feelings are because people do understand that the numbers presented were about if those office buildings are utilized to full capacity, when we all know that that's not the case. And I actually think it's 25% vacant, or sorry, 25% occupied rather than 25% vacant. So what I would ask is simply for transparency. Let's be honest, let's be transparent with our neighbors. That information was presented as, oh, if we build all these homes, the traffic and parking is gonna go down. Let's be honest and transparent that that's not the case, and let's see a study on what's actually going to happen. Not based on if those office buildings are utilized to full capacity, but what's the reality today? What has the reality been for the past five or six years since COVID? I'd also ask, there were, there were a couple of comments about, through, from our neighbors as well as in the presentation about using that area as a cut-through. I think we acknowledge maybe that's not the purpose of the road, but that is how it's used. And it was addressed that there would remain entrances on both, excuse me, Plymouth Road and Gravers Road. I think that should be discussed more because of the impact to the community and also the impact to potentially, let's say, 300 new neighbors. What are those folks gonna do when they move in and don't realize the thousands of people in the area who intend to drive through their neighborhood on a daily basis? I think there do need to be two entrances to that community, but how are we gonna make that work for their new neighbors as well as their existing neighbors? I'd also just ask as a resident of Gravers Road, for some more information about what we mean when we say we're gonna move that entrance to the left a little bit, because one of our neighbors shared how much that can impact the sightlines, whether you're making a left on Gravers or right coming out from that industrial park. I think there could be agreed more accidents or problems with traffic there. And then two questions, just in terms for the council to consider, but also Mr. Peon, if this moves forward, what community amenities could be in place? So Cold Point was brought up as an example, looking at a coffee shop or some sort of other amenity. Again, yes, 250 homes could go in, but we're only doing 159. Could we do 150? Put something else there that would benefit the whole community? And then finally, the sidewalks that were discussed inside of the new community. What about outside of the community? Would Mr. Peon's company be responsible for sidewalks down Gravers or down Plymouth? How does that work with that fifth office building that's remaining that's a shared entrance off both roads? I just ask that those things be taken into consideration, so it's not an afterthought. I, I think we've all seen too many times where this conversation takes place, again, it's seen as the neighbors venting, an approval goes forward, and then everyone posts on Facebook or talks to each other when something goes the way they didn't think it was going to, but it's too late to actually make any change. Thank you.
Anyone else in the last row?
Hi, I'm Debbie Livsey. Sorry, my notes are a little scattered because, you know, there's a lot. I had a question about the occupancy rate that was asked, the question. So, Mr. Peon, your question, the question was about, there are two buildings, 25,000 square feet, and you've leased out, the 25,000 square feet were leased out of 150,000 square feet? Is that right?
Of the four buildings, if you put them together, it's roughly 150,000 or 160,000 square feet. And there's currently 25,000 square feet, roughly, that is leased.
So that's 16% of the whole property? That's not a very high number. So it's almost as much as the 25% of the office occupancy, even less. Just to point that out. Someone asked a question, but I think it's already answered. Once it was rezoned to de-residential, can it go back to commercial? But Mr. Clark already answered that.
Yeah, I think there's a, I'll clarify. He, he can't do any, if it changed to de- He, he can't do any, if it changed to de-residential, he can't do any new office building on the space. The existing thing, the existing buildings that are there, it's not like we're going to change it to de-residential and then he's got to shut down everything that, or the commercial right away. He can still use that until he gets his approvals. He can't do any new office space once he, once this is changed to de-residential.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered, somebody had a, the last guy actually had a really good idea about adding some additional, like, is there any other thoughts, ideas, brainstormings of what other ways to revitalize that property? There is a need to do something there, but I don't think additional tax revenue and all this traffic and more residents is the answer. Which brings up, my biggest concern is traffic. I have a two and a half mile commute to my job. And I won't even tell you how long it would take when we go down Germantown Pike and make a left on Chemical and go to South Gravesers Road. It's incredibly, it's awful. So I do cut through, I have to admit, because there's, otherwise I'd be stuck in traffic. Never mind the sinkhole that somebody else had mentioned that was closed for many, many months. The road just caused backups and delays for months. And there was a sinkhole on Germantown Pike at one point. Those are another concern for mall development that's happening now. That's bringing, going to be bringing in more traffic. And my commute consists of that corner of Plymouth Road and Johnson Highway. Those new homes, the school, somebody's doing the construction on Plymouth Road. And so there's construction vehicles along that road. It's, there should be a light right there now, because it is. It's really backed up in the morning with traffic for school. Kids, like someone else mentioned, crossing the street even though there's a crossing guard. It's dangerous on that, on that road already. So talking about schools, we built a new middle school recently. Our taxes went up. Has anybody evaluated with 159 condos, how many more elementary school children are probably going to need a place to go? And the elementary school being across the street will probably be maxed out. So that's going to, where are they going to build? Is there room to expand the current building? And then again, where's the resources? We're going to be taxed again. Not to mention, our taxes went up to, for the new building that we're sitting in. I'm going to echo the need for a diverse demographic. I think that was an excellent suggestion. I think we need to keep that in mind. We recently experienced a PICO issue in our neighborhood. I was out of power for three days in the sweltering heat. And others have expressed the same concern. So we're already maxed out, I think, on some of these trans, formers, transisters, I don't know what you call them. So what's this going to do to our grid in our community? The last, the last problem I have is the strain on services, which everybody has already talked about. Trash pickup and storm water and the healthcare system, water pressure, et cetera. So I just wanted to express my concerns. And I really hope you do not convert this to more housing and development, to develop it. Maybe something else, not more homes.
Is there anyone who has not spoken who wishes to make public comment?
My name is Kurt Livsey, C U R T, L I V, that's in picture, E Z E Y. I live on 15 Skip Road, Plymouth, PA. A lot of the residents here brought up a lot of good points. Being a resident here all my life, I've seen it gone from farmland to, you know, vacant property to building homes to offices to schools and stuff like that in my 61 years of living here. I, I really think if we took the time and did an evaluation of what we could do with the existing use of the vacant left by the, of the, of the office space there, and maybe do something for the veterans. I mean, my dad was a veteran, there's a lot of veterans here. Instead of going to Coatesville or to Spring City, I think maybe that would be something that we could do. I think we're going to need a school. I think that's going to be an issue if we do put more homes in there, plus parents, plus kids. It's going to just tack on more things. I know we did the improvement here at the junior high school. I'm not too sure what we're going to do at the senior high school. Sorry, I'm just kind of nervous. We, I, I just think that if we can find out if there's a different plan that we can come up with besides housing. There's, I think there's just got to be something else. I know everybody uses the cut through to go to work, to go to school. I know there's issues with, you know, kids crossing the street. But if you have kids that are going to live there, then they got to cross to school anyway. So it's, you know, traffic's always going to be a problem. There's going to be a problem with stormwater. What about sewer? Of course, someone mentioned trash. It goes on and on, it just doubles up, you know, it's, it, it won't stop. But I would vote against housing development there. I think we just got to find a different use for that property going forward. I know Mr. Peon has done wonderful things in, not only here, but in Montgomery County. But I, I think at this time, it would be beneficial for us to use this property for something else besides housing. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who has not spoken who wishes to speak?
I didn't really come here to talk, I just wanted to listen, see Kim. Chris Van Ero, from the Township, M A N D R O. I think governing's not easy. This shows, this conversation is a very difficult conversation. A lot of really good points raised. Did want to just touch on a few things from my experience, sitting on council for eight years. Because there were a lot of conversations about taxes and the changing character of the township. The township has changed, I was here for 15 years. And the changes are not things that we can control, the changes happen. One of the biggest changes being the change in demand for office. The change in demand for, you know, office complexes like this that were once occupied. That has a lot of repercussions. And one of the bigger repercussions that we see are taxes. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I can tell you, sitting up there on council, the number of times I had to read a tax zone, really especially since 2020, but even starting before there, where the township and the school district are both losing tax revenue every time an office complex or, you know, a partially vacant commercial property comes back for reassessment. And there's been a lot of talk tonight about the costs of adding residential. We have to think about the costs of not doing some of these things and the costs of leaving things as they are. Because the reduction of tax revenue coupled with an increasing call from more police officers, increasing maintenance of our parks, adding this, adding that. Those costs are going up no matter what. Everything gets more expensive over time. The pass-through traffic in the township isn't going away. We could stop building any new housing units for the next 30 years and traffic is going to continue to increase on Germantown Pike from Turnpike all the way up to Pottstown. So what can we do to make sure that, you know, we're being smart in our development? And I think, I think the township has done a lot of really good things. There's been a lot of preservation of natural land. We preserved the farmland at Maple Acres, you know, prevented that from ever being developed. Prior to that, there was the preservation of the land in Parry's Lot. There was once a proposal to build single homes on Jolly Road where the Prince of Peace Church is. We rejected that. There was a proposal to build residential, a combination of townhouse and single homes on the first student former Ramona bus program. We said no to that and eventually the school district was able to purchase that land. So there have been a lot of good examples where the township's been very careful not to overdevelop, not to add too much residential. But there's also the very real issue that we face of the changing landscape of the commercial market. And, you know, studies will, will show you, and you see that when it comes to zoning, the lowest impact zoning is residential. In this particular property, there's been discussions about have there been any other alternatives? And I can remember in both formal and informal conversations, a lot of conversations about this particular property. There were conversations about apartments, several hundred apartment buildings. There were conversations about, obviously, we've already heard the five-story or seven-story office building. There were conversations about a large self-storage facility. I don't think that any of those uses are a lower impact than residential. I don't think anybody living in a million-dollar-plus home in the new development would back up to public storage for a five-story office building. So, you know, while there are a lot of concerns and obviously legitimate concerns about adding more housing units, I think we do have to consider really the danger of doing nothing and the negative impacts of maybe more residential versus the negative impact of vacant offices and potentially the future possibility of more impactful development on those sites that we might regret. And I think Mr. Stein already gave kudos to Mr. Peon and the quality work that he's done. But, you know, you do have to look at who's coming in to present and who the responsible developers are. And use that as consideration in determining some of the properties and some of the projects. So, again, tax revenue, you know, the need for that, the reassessments that we've seen. And I guess the other, one other thing that hasn't really been asked, but I am curious, and I don't know what the breakdown is in Cold Point Village or similar properties, but, you know, I would encourage any developments like this to consider first for master bedrooms as possible or things that would provide a potential variation of types of owners, which would be indicated for both older residents as well as families. Thank you.
Anyone who has not spoken who wishes to speak? Ends, we'll close public comment. Counsel, this would be your opportunity to ask Mr. Peon. Ms. Peanzio, any questions you would like or any comments you would like?
I was wondering if it's appropriate for us to perhaps respond to some of the comments that have been made? For example, there was a concern raised about spot zoning. And I'm wondering if maybe responding to some of the concerns residents have raised might help alleviate some of those concerns or address them? And then we can also comment, would that be?
Sure, we can, counsel can respond to any questions you would like. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you would like. It's not spot zoning. We've looked at it, I'm sure Ms. Peanzio has looked at it. This would not be a spot zone. No, public comment is over.
I'm wondering if we should also address, a number of residents have expressed concerns about the strain on resources. And so thinking about things like if this is an HOA, what resources would not be strained? For example, trash pickup. What resources might be strained? And just addressing some of those, like we have, we have questions about sewer, about public safety issues, about trash collection. So maybe just addressing some of the resource concerns that have been raised.
Go on again, Ms. Peanzio can correct me if, if I'm wrong or she can supplement what, what I'm saying. But as part of the land development process, the applicant would have to get approvals from the water provider having jurisdiction, the sewer provider having jurisdiction. There would probably be some PENDOT approvals that would be involved here. They would have to, depending on what they are proposing and the type of development and depending on the way they plan on building the roads, then that question becomes whether these are going to be offered for dedication, whether or not these will be plowed by the township. I think the township pretty much collects trash on every residential street in the township. And if I'm wrong about that, someone can correct me. But they will have, they'll have to get approvals from the electric, whoever's providing electricity at the site. So all of those things would have to be done during the land development process.
So, Mr. Peon, my understanding, when we were first looking at this, the several times that you've been before us, is that these townhomes would be a homeowners association, an HOA, is that correct?
That would be our expectation based on our experience in the past with the township, yes.
Okay, and would trash collection be performed in an HOA? Is it your anticipation that the trash collection would be private and not the public works of the township?
That's how it is at Cold Point Village, where there's an association, those roads are private and the trash is handled by the association.
And how about snow plowing at Cold Point Village who handles that? Township crews or the HOA?
We, we may want to pause on this conversation and save it for land development because of the conversation we're having about cut-through traffic and people wanting to be able to use the roads in this community. I think it might be best that we wait for the land development process, that we maybe get through some of those issues and have those conversations. But we know we're going to have a homeowners association for stormwater management and things like that. So maybe that conversation will expand as we get into it.
Will those roads be private, you said?
That's what I want to have a conversation about during land development.
Road's private now.
Okay, there was an opportunity to make public comment. There's not, there's not, there's not an opportunity to be yelling out now and asking questions. This is council's opportunity to ask questions.
But to clarify, the, the road is currently a private road. It is currently private property.
I think what Ms. Peanzio is saying is that there are certain issues that are going to need to be addressed because of what we heard frequently this evening about this being used as a cut through for individuals. And if this is not going to be dedicated to the township and the property owner then might want to prevent that cut through from occurring, I think that's something that they're saying they want to explore during the land development process.
Right, or to continue the cut through and therefore have that conversation.
Mr. Peon, can you address the question about the number of school students expected? And maybe the breakdown, whether we're talking about elementary school, middle school, high school? Given 159 townhouses, three and four bedrooms, what would you anticipate?
So we did do some research on this. In 2016, which is the most recent information we could find, the Montgomery County Planning Commission did some projections on impact on schools through 2025, 2026. Based on 159 homes, townhomes, excuse me, the estimate is somewhere between 70 and 90 on the school system as a whole. So that's not on Plymouth Elementary, it's on the school system as a whole.
Thank you.
To give you an idea, that's 1.4% of the total enrollment.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? You said the school system as a whole. Do you mean then including like preschools and other things that aren't actually the school district?
No, no, it's, it would be a, that's a projection of how many students would be created based on the planning commission's, and Montgomery County Planning Commission's data of how many students are generated by 159 townhomes. And when I say on the school system as a whole and that percentage, I'm using that based on what Colonial School District shows as their total enrollment and then the percentage of the enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
What's the impact on the public schools, not those?
What's the impact on the public schools, not those who choose to send their children to private or religious schools?
Correct. Yeah, just the impact total in the public schools.
Another quick question. I know there was a concern or at least a question about parking and where visitors might be parking. And I don't know if the concern was perhaps that maybe visitors would be parking outside of this complex on the roads that are adjacent. But could you address the parking situation? I know there are additional parking areas outside of a person's garage and driveways.
Matt, do you mind flipping back to the plan, please? So, I'm glad you asked that question. Thank you. I did want to clarify that. So, on this plan between parking spaces available in the driveway, not in the garage, just in the driveway and spread out, and I'll emphasize the part "spread out," around the community, there are 350 parking spaces. That does not include the number of spaces that could be available in the garage because we would count that or what's in the driveway as the same. So, that's an important feature because we try to avoid the situation of not being able to find a parking space around the community if you come to visit. If you, to avoid on-street parking because there's not parking located close enough to homes. And this is not a final plan, but that is definitely something that we are going to be strongly keeping into consideration should this rezone and be approved and should we enter land development.
Thank you.
To build on something that Mr. Monero pointed out in the comment portion, there have been other, people asked about what other plans. And counsel, I've been on, nearing the end of my term now, eight years. There have been proposals to have self-storage units there and a proposal for high-rise apartments just in two of the buildings, the ones closest to the Sussex Apartments, for 300 apartments. So, and we did not move forward with that. We had no interest. So, you know, we don't just look at the first people who come along. We have been very cognizant of what that area is. We do have, what we saw was a transition from the Sussex Apartments, which are apartments, and excuse my accent, but I can't think of another word. I usually do. And then this office complex and then the B residential and also considering across the street on Plymouth Road where you have Falcon and Eagle, which are single-family homes. So, you know, we did not want to see rental units, 300 apartments going up. And so, we did not move on that. I think others have pointed out that this proposal did come from someone that we have experience with as a reputable builder in our township. He's already mentioned the places, Cold Point Village, and I can never remember the name of the other one behind the CVS. But, so, you know, we do look at those things. We do want to consider the quality of life of the people who are currently living along Plymouth Road, Johnson, even way down at White's Road, across Gallagher, Gravers, and of course, the newest development at Alexander and Sebastian. So, there have been other proposals coming to us. This has been the least impactful one on our current residents. And as Mr. Monero pointed out after you left, Chris, many more reassessments came through. We have been refunding money and losing tax revenue as these office buildings go vacant and can no longer, and get reassessed downward. So, it's a loss of revenue. And we're looking at something that could be homeowners who I think everybody appreciates when a homeowner moves in, they, they're not transient, they're not moving on, they're here to stay. And I always like to tell people who talk about, you know, all the new houses that have been going up and we don't want any more. And my house was built in 1840. So, anyone who lives in a house newer than 1840, and I haven't lived there since then, but I have been here for 32 years, and I do see the changes and we can't stop them. Most of our traffic, especially Germantown Pike, is not coming from the people living in Plymouth. It's people coming down Germantown or going up Germantown from all the development that has happened out there, or coming down to get into Philly, to get onto the Turnpike, to get onto the Blue Route. It's pass-through traffic. It's not us. So, I just wanted to point that out. Other council members have questions for Mr. Peyon or the traffic engineer who's prepared?
One quick question. Again, this came up numerous times with residents. And to be fair, I don't think Mr. Peyon was trying to trick anyone with the traffic statistics. I think we were looking for fairly what were some of, what would it be if by right that site was used at its maximum capacity? What is the traffic we might anticipate versus traffic if it becomes residential? So I think that is a fair question. But I understand that there's also concern, what is it versus like current day? Because there will be an increase. If current day, if it's unused, adding any traffic is increased traffic. And I think those are two different issues and I think they're both important issues. So I'm wondering if Mr. Peyon, your traffic expert, Mr. Hammond, might be able to address that part of the question just to put that piece to rest or at least give an answer to the residents who have asked.
Well, we love to have Matt talk, so he'll have him come up. But we did not yet perform the traffic study. That is something that we would do during the land development process. But yes, to clarify, we always, traffic engineers like to compare what was on the property, what could be full capacity to what's proposed, what's been approved, and then what's to come is what he does in the traffic study, which he has not yet done, but he can certainly give some highlights of what he expects.
No, that's, that's fair and I appreciate that. And the reason I think it's important to look at what could be on that site is if we were to say no to residential and they were to fill those buildings, right? If things turn around and they fill those buildings and put an additional building on that site, I know, I see you shaking your heads no, but it, I'm not saying it will happen, I'm saying it is a possibility that is worth considering, that by right that could happen. I'm not saying it's the only factor, but I think we have to consider that amongst other considerations, including what is current day traffic.
Just state and spell your full name, please.
Sure. Matthew Hammond, H-A-M-M-O-N-D.
Do you sign and swear or affirm a testimony about the issue? Be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I think I understand the questions. I've heard a number of comments from the residents this evening and I understand the trepidation and concerns relating to the traffic volumes that have been provided. And it has been stated, those figures that were presented earlier by Mr. Peyon were just that, figures of if the by-right use of the property were fully occupied, how much traffic would you expect those five existing buildings totaling 185,000 square feet of office space to generate from a traffic perspective? Not only during the peak hours of traffic, and I think I've heard numerous comments tonight about how difficult it is for people to get in and out of their neighborhoods, which I totally understand, but also looking at it over the course of the day. How much traffic would an office building generate over the course of a day versus the proposal in front of you? We also made the comparison of the previously approved plan, which included 354,000 square feet of office space on that property. And I know there's probably a number of people behind me shaking their head right now, I'm not going to look back, with respect to the office space and the viability of occupying that office space. But as has been stated numerous times this evening, the property is 16% give or take occupied. That pretty much means any development of that property, regardless of the use, would generate more traffic than what the residents are used to today. So, as a traffic engineer, not only do we want to look at the by-right use of the property and how much traffic could potentially be generated there, but we also want to look at exists out there today. And if we're fortunate enough to move forward and get the zoning, get into land development, there will be a very comprehensive traffic study that's going to be completed. And that traffic study will look at the conditions today and then the conditions in the future. So it'll look at how much traffic is actually in and out of that development today, how much traffic will be added in the future based on general growth, whether it's the apartment buildings proposed at the mall or any other developments in the immediate vicinity. And then on top of that, the traffic associated with the subject property at full build. We'll look at that, we'll analyze it, we'll analyze it in accordance with the township requirements, we'll analyze it in accordance with PENDOT requirements, and we'll determine what, if any, roadway improvements are necessary. As I believe I mentioned last week in front of this board, I do see some benefits, not only from the reduction in traffic, assuming the property was at full occupancy, but the relocation of the driveway on Gravers Road. There's been comment about the site distance and whether or not moving the driveway will make it worse than it exists today. And I will tell you as a professional doing this 30 years, moving that driveway will benefit and improve the site distance. That driveway is being moved 175 feet, give or take, to the west, which will help improve site distance. Right now, it's almost virtually on the curve and the only reason that people can see coming out of that private driveway onto Gravers Road is because that large hedge row in front of the, I assume the reused pickleball court building is trimmed. They limbed the tree up so you can see around the turn. If those trees weren't limbed and they continue to grow, then that's going to inhibit that site distance. So, beyond that, beyond just my word, that would be something that would be included in the study. And we have to show that we meet or exceed all of the township and PENDOT site distance requirements to prove beyond a doubt that we meet those, the site distance. In terms of the cut-through, I know Ms. Peanzio talked about if we're fortunate enough to get to the next stage, have a further discussion with respect to the road as private or public. But as a traffic engineer, I would say that road is private today. And I obviously was not around when the development was constructed, but I have to assume that the intention at that time was not for that road to be used as a cut-through for public purposes. Now, honestly, obviously, the residents have benefited from that, but I would say it doesn't give them the right to continue to use that road as a cut-through. And I understand it will have effect on other roads in the surrounding area, but that is what the traffic study is for and that's what the traffic study will look at. The other big benefit is the pedestrian connectivity and the ability to connect this development all the way up to Plymouth Road, which has a pretty robust pedestrian network at this point. So hopefully, I've answered most of the questions the board has at this point or I've heard so far. I know there was other various questions, visitor parking, having two access points, which I think is absolutely appropriate for this type of development. And I guess one other comment that was brought up was about traffic speeding in the areas. And I know that, I believe it was in July, that the township passed a traffic calming ordinance, which now allows residents to petition the township to look at their neighborhoods for potential traffic calming and also basically outlines what developers or others within the township can do in order to investigate the possibility of providing traffic calming in certain areas. So hopefully, I've captured most of what was discussed this evening.
Are there any other council members who have questions of Mr. Hammond? Thank you. Give Mr. Peyon a seat back.
Okay. Willingly.
Thank you, Matt.
Council members, if there are no further questions, the hearing was open. We've taken public comment. The hearing has been properly advertised. It would be appropriate for counsel to make a motion to approve this map amendment, deny this map amendment if you see fit. It is also, unlike other aspects of the municipality's planning code, we're not under any obligation to act on this this evening. There will be no further information that counsel will receive before making this decision. The hearing has been held as is required. So right now, it'd be appropriate time for a motion to be made.
some additional time for consideration and conversation.
So, you're making a motion to table this until Monday? Are we meeting on Columbus Day? We're meeting on the 13th, correct? October 13th? Okay. So my understanding is you are making a motion to table until Monday, October 13th at 6:00 PM in this room. Is that correct?
Yes.
Second. There's no discussion on a motion to table, so the vote should be called? We have a motion and a second. There's no discussion on a motion to table, so the vote should be called.
Okay. Calling the vote to table. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair vote's not in favor.
Can I say something?
Well, now you can.
I just wanted to say that basically, Mr. Monero pretty much summarized what my thoughts were on the entire situation. There has to be some level of responsible development. And I've talked to people about this development who are against it, who aren't in this room, and some of the comments that came up most often were, "I don't have a problem with development, but I don't want it near my home." And we can't say we can't develop everywhere in Plymouth. I sat here and watched us refund millions of dollars in assessments. And so, everyone's worried about their taxes. Us getting tax income benefits you, then we won't have to raise taxes.
I'm worried about poll now.
Please, please.
We're, we live here too. We're concerned about all of those things. We get into this because we want to help people.
We should ask how many people have been hit by cars.
That's all I have to say.
And they wish to make comment, they will not be permitted to. The hearing was held this evening. All that will occur on the 13th will be discussion from the board and a vote.
Excuse me, what was the vote?
The vote to table is four to one. It has been tabled until October 13th.
I was saying I agree with Mr. Monero. I'm just saying we need some level of responsible development.
But we will give time for people to clear out before we move on with the rest of our agenda.
agenda.
Can you please step away from the podium, please? Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's a good idea. Thank you. Thank you for that idea. We are moving on to the rest of our meeting after people have a time to clear. The hearing has been closed. Pardon? Sure, you'll be able to do that at the end of this meeting. We will have public comment, and you can comment about anything, including the community center, okay? For those who are remaining, there was a question about whether or not you can comment on other matters, and yes, at the end of our meeting, because this zoning hearing is off, over, at the end of our meeting, there will be time for public comment on any matters, whether that, other than what we just had comment for. So any other matters in the township, whether they're currently on the agenda, or whether you just have a comment about life in general, you'll be able to do so at the end of this public comment meeting. Okay, so... All right, next on the agenda, we have a motion to adopt a resolution by Mr. Nelson.
I move that Township Council adopt Resolution 2025-37, recognizing Anthony Leacy for his service on the Historical Architectural Review Board per the attachment.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or comments? This is a motion to recognize service by one of our community members. Hearing no questions or comments, now take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair vote's in favor. Mr. Nelson, would you like to read the resolution?
Absolutely. Resolution 2025-37, awarded to Anthony Leacy by Plymouth Township Council. In grateful recognition of his generous and outstanding service and contributions rendered as a member of the Historical Architectural Review Board, Anthony Leacy served Plymouth Township with commitment and dedication by volunteering his time to the Historical Architectural Review Board during the period extending from November 2024 through August 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Anthony Leacy. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Anthony Leacy, presented and approved at a duly convened meeting of Plymouth Township conducted on this eighth day of September 2025.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Leacy is not here this evening, but he will receive his award for his service on the Historical Architectural Review Board. Next, I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August 4th, 2025, the council workshop, and the August 11th, 2025, business meeting. Is there a second?
I would second that and also note that there's one correction that should be made in the minutes, assuming we can make that correction after this meeting. It's a small correction, but I'm sure important to Sergeant Wax. His promotion was listed as a promotion to sergeant instead of a promotion to lieutenant. So if we just made that change in the minutes, I would second the motion.
All right, with that amendment to the minutes, to correct the office to which Officer Wax was promoted to state that it's to lieutenant, we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair vote's in favor. Thank you for that catch. Next, I would like to make a motion that we approve the departmental reports and schedule of bills for August 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any comments, corrections from council? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair vote's in favor. Next, we have a motion to approve the rental rates for the GPCC and other park things, and that will be handled by Ms. Leonard.
I move that Township Council approve the 2026 rental rates for GPCC pavilions and pool passes per the attachment.
Do I need to read this attachment? Okay.
Okay, one second, sir, we'll get to you. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Leonard, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council?
I would just comment that, I mean, knowing that we're not reading the whole thing into the minutes, the increases are modest, moderate, and I know that our GPCC staff works hard to only increase those slightly every second year, and I think they followed a very reasonable plan for doing so, something that is appropriate, given the cost of all things rising. And I would support it.
Yes, and I just want to say that the only increases are to the rentals of the pavilion. Given that the pool is closed, there is no increase to the general membership, that will remain the same. Any comments from the audience? Sir, do you mind just coming up and speaking into the microphone here at the podium so that the person who transcribes our minutes can hear you?
I was curious. What are you against old people, you're charging them more? It's higher. I mean, why would it matter? Fifty and under is 100, 51 and over is 187.
Which increases are you talking about?
The volume entrance.
Oh, the pavilion rentals? Well...
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir, they're talking about the amount of people at the event, not the age of the people when you're talking about the pavilions.
Oh, I'm glad you understood. I didn't know what, I get it. Yes, we like our senior citizens up here, including me. Yes, it has to do with the number of people. If you have a small gathering for a first birthday party at the pavilion, you know, it's not...
It's longer.
Yeah, but if you have a really large one, like a graduation, you just pay a little bit more. We don't care what age comes.
How big's the pavilion?
Oh, there are pavilions at the Caldwell Park, there are pavilions at the GPCC, there are pavilions at Harriet Wetherly, and they're different sizes.
He's asking how large they are.
But how large, but, I mean, they vary, that's what I was going to...
What's the biggest one?
What's the biggest one?
If you put over 50 people on it.
Oh, sure, and then they spill over into the playground and the fields and the pathways, so, yes. Depends on how you set it up. All right, any other comments about the GPCC rentals? All right, hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair vote's in favor. Okay, next we have a motion for escrow release, and that is by Ms. Visio.
I move that Township Council approve the escrow release for 2622 Butler Pike, per the attachment, which I will read. It is a letter from Mr. Lonnie Manai, noting that at this time, based on field observations of what's completed to date, we found that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of $45,367.25. By releasing this amount, the account balance in escrow for the project is reduced to $59,031.87.
All right, motion for escrow release by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from members of council or from members of the audience? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair vote's in favor. Moving to our last action item for this evening, a motion to approve a time extension, and that is by Mr. Whitney.
Yeah, I move that Township Council approve the time extension for LD 25-1, Bergy Realty Company, at 1441 East Ridge Pike, per the attachment.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any questions or comments from members of council or from members in the audience? Hearing none, we'll move to the roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair vote's in favor. All right, we will now move on to the informational items on tonight's agenda, and we will have Police Department update by our chief of police. We did the remembrance of Brad Fox at the beginning of the meeting, given the number of people in attendance for that, but the police has other matters on which the chief wishes to update us.
Thank you. I just wanted to give council and the public an update on our traffic efforts. I know that with our, the traffic details and the traffic calming that we've started in the township, as I review our data that we compile monthly, I see that to date in 2024, from January through August, we had completed 221 traffic details, which are individual details where we address speed, we address safety, any issues that come up, whether they're school zones. But we did some realignments, and we made a concerted effort to address more of these issues, because it's been something that residents have had the most issue with. And in 2025, to date, January to August, we've increased from 221 details to 722 details. And as I look at our projections for the end of the year, we should be close to 1,100 traffic details, as opposed to 363 all of last year. So I just wanted to give an idea with, when we talk about traffic calming, these are some of the things we're doing, absent physical barriers, putting them up, this is the actions that were taken, and I'm, I was actually glad to see this, because it shows that we're moving in the right direction. And the only other issue that I thought was serious enough and worthy to discuss was just to let you know that one of the things that we're going to be addressing, actually, in two days at Church on the Mall, is we're going to be going there in support of the Code Blue shelter that Church on the Mall has also shown support for, and we're going to see if we can make things a little bit easier for some of the concerns that the mall seems to have and the developer there, and see if there's any way that we can help facilitate a smoother transition. We're also bringing our social service co-responder with us. We've also had them talk to members of TLC and the county to get some ideas, and I believe that a representative of the county has been invited along from TLC to also speak and see what they might be able to do. So we're looking forward to that, because what we found with our statistics is that even though for a good decade or more, up until about five years ago, we consistently had about 20 calls for service a year for the unhoused, and this year, it has been steadily climbing, but this year, we're trending toward 200 calls. So clearly, it's been a growing issue, and this is one of the solutions, so we're happy to get behind it.
Thank you, chief. We very much appreciate that. I know that the Code Blue shelter, Plymouth is very proud, as a very small and local municipality, that through the efforts of actual volunteer, private community members, including a member of our council, and Ms. Leonard, and of course, Ms. Gail Plant, that Plymouth has operated on a volunteer basis, a Code Blue shelter. I've done some shifts there with some of the people in the audience today, and I can say that it's very well run, and the police presence and the service you do to help those volunteers has been very much appreciated, and really appreciate you stepping up to reassure the people at Church on the Mall that this will continue to be a very safe and necessary operation. So thank you, chief, and thank you to all of your officers who have helped out with that shelter over the past year.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, just as an informational item, I would like to announce that the branch and chip program has begun. This is where the township will come and pick up your branches, if you call them. You have to call them, and they let you know when they will be out. And these are not for your usual yard waste every Wednesday, where you have your, well, leaves are different, forget that, where you have your cuttings from your shrubs and all. These are those big limbs and branches that have fallen in all of the past storms. So the fall program will run from Tuesday, September 2nd, it's already begun. It will end on Friday, October 3rd, and then it will run again in the spring, in March through April. Residents who would like their tree branches picked up during this period, September 2nd to October 3rd, you must call the Public Works Department. The telephone number is 610-277-4103, and this is all on the website. Call prior to the noon of Wednesday of the week that you wish to have your branches picked up, and you, and leave your address. So you call them, you say, "I live at such and such a street, and I would like my branches picked up." If you call by noon Wednesday, your branches will be collected on Thursday and Friday, weather permitting. Collection could be delayed until Monday or Tuesday of the following week, that depends on volume and weather. The Public Works Department will chip those branches and stockpile them. Those wood chips are then turned into mulch, and that mulch is free for the taking at the Public Works driveway here at 700 Belvoir Road, different entrance. These are what you need to do if you want your branches picked up. Leave them as long as possible, a minimum of five feet in length. So you know how tall you are, and I always just go, and if the branch comes to my chin or above, it counts. For some of you people out there, it probably has to come a little bit lower. So that's because they're feeding it into a chipper, and we don't want little short branches for their hand to go in as well. Also, nothing over five inches in diameter can be chipped, and that has to do with the size that the machine can accommodate. You should place your branches in an orderly pile at the street, at the curb, and if your branches have thorns, like if you've got honey locust trees and trees like that, let them know so that they know to keep their gloves on when they're handling them. The branch collection does not include your hedge and shrub clippings, if you want those collected. As always, put them out in a biodegradable brown bag at the curb or in your yard waste container, or tied up with biodegradable string. So that's not the plastic nylon cords, that's the hemp and the cotton stuff, and those will be picked up on Wednesday's regular yard waste. This program is not intended to remove the lodge entire trees from your property, and the township does reserve the right to refuse collection at their discretion if you've put something out that's just too big to get into the machine. So, thank you. And our next item on the agenda is the announcement of citizen board vacancies by Ms. Visio.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So we have vacancies on three citizen boards currently. We have on the Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, there are three positions open. On the Human Relations Commission, one position open. Our Historical Architectural Review Board, one position open, and we really appreciate when citizens, residents, step up to look for seats on these boards. If you are interested, we ask you to submit a resume or a letter expressing your interest to our township manager at 700 Belvoir Road, or via email to mwest@plymoth township.org.
Thank you, Ms. Visio. Next on the... Next on the agenda is the announcement of our upcoming zoning hearings by Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. The zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 15th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 p.m. here in the Plymouth Township Building, 700 Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA 19462, on the following applications. EVB Gravers Road LLC on an application for a variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342, as amended, Article 14, Section 1400, to permit proposed use. The variance requested is as follows. Applicant requests at the zoning hearing board reverse the zoning determination or, in the alternative, grant the requested variance. Property is located at 300 Lee Drive in Limited Industrial Zoning District.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next, we have an announcement of our upcoming events in Parks and Recreation by Mr. Whitney.
Right. First up, we have the new pop-up fitness classes on Wednesday, September 24th, and Wednesday, October 1st. Halloween Family Bingo will be on Friday, October 3rd. The Halloween Spooktacular, which is new, will be on Friday, October 17th. Campfire and Hay Ride at Harriet Wetherell Park will be on Saturday, October 18th. The Veterans Day Celebration will be on Wednesday, November 5th. The Vendor Market will be on Saturday, November 15th. The Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony will be on Wednesday, December 3rd. Breakfast with Santa will be on Saturday, December 13th. New Plymouth Township Parks and Recreation app, that is free. Fall sponsors are wanted, and that is always ongoing. Details are available in our brochure, app, website, social media, or by calling 610-277-4312.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. And our final informational item will be by Ms. Leonard on the Cuny Town update.
The Cuny Town update for August, September 2025. The 8th of August, PICO completed the pole removal that was needed to start the project. On the 20th of August, contractor Lenny Electric started the project, and the project is expected to be completed in September. And the only other update here is that this update was posted to the township website... oh, not, I'm sorry, not this update, the July-August update was posted to the 2020... or, excuse me, to the township website on September 4th. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Appreciate that. At this time, the meeting is open to any members of the public who wish to make any comments. Just please come forward. Sure. Yes, sir.
I'm sure I have one, sir.
We can just have your name for the minutes?
You got it. I'm Joseph Kelly. I moved my family here in 1988 when I retired from the Navy. I live on Falcon Way, but this isn't a comment concerning the previous things. As you can see, I use a cane. I use the Plymouth Pool for the past 25 years. They shut it down once a week, for a full week, once a year, and they never do any maintenance. They do cleaning, and that's all. They've shown pictures of the pump room. I've gone through a Navy shipyard period with a submarine, a nuclear submarine. We took the submarine apart and put it back together again in less than two years. They're saying it's going to take a minimum of six months to repair the pump room at the pool, and I think that's ridiculous, and I think somebody should look into it. Okay?
All right. Thank you, and be sure that your comments get also communicated with the Director of Parks and Recreation, but I appreciate how much you and many other residents depend on that pool.
We do.
Okay.
There's a lot of us whom we discuss our health problems, and who's had the most limbs replaced or...
Oh, okay.
Both knees and a hip for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's great, and congratulations on your, and thank you on your Navy service.
You're welcome.
Any other... Sure, come on forward.
What are the small chairs?
Pardon?
When we were here before, the Radivanees had these comfortable chairs.
Oh, this...
These are the two comfortable chairs out here. This chair is...
So your comment is you want a padded chair at the next meeting?
No, no, I'm just saying, is this temporary or this permanent?
Oh, no, this is permanent, this room. We did have sort of theater-type seating...
Yeah, I remember.
Previously, yes.
I can see everybody now because I'm a program. I'm just curious about that, that's all.
So what we did was we lowered the council from an up-on-high dais to be down lower. And the reason there are these chairs in here is that this allows us to be more multi-use, so we can put in tables and rearrange chairs for other kinds of public meeting uses. So I'm sorry... Well, that, we'll talk at Parks and Recreation about that program.
Yeah.
We'll relay that. So yes, this is, this is how it will be set up for meetings going forward, but there are other uses of this room, and we decided to...
Make sense.
...downsize a little bit. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the public on any topics whatsoever? Sure. Come on forward, just state your name, and if you live in Plymouth, we don't need your exact address.
I'm happy to tell you my address. I'm at Gary Burkmann.
Okay.
1900 Sandy Hill Road, and I've been there for 13 years. And previous to that, I was living in Florida, but I came back after living and working in Florida. But I was born in Plymouth, and my family has always had a home here since 1953, and I've seen a lot of changes come about, and for the most part, great. Anyway, I bought this home on the corner of White's Road and Sandy Hill Road, and there's so much traffic on White's Road, I'm afraid the children who ride these little scooters up and back, they fast their scooters, I tell you what. I'm afraid for their health. There isn't a speed limit sign on White's Road, and I think there should be one at the beginning and at the end. And if you were to see how many cars and school buses and UPS trucks and FedEx trucks pick up and the landscaping vehicles, a lot of those have diesel engines, and as soon as they come off of Sandy Hill onto White's Road, I can hear it because I'm right there, gun it. Those big diesel engines are loud, smoke. So that's what I think the board should consider doing, because God forbid one of these little kids gets hurt or killed. I myself, I had to jump into my bushes a couple times when I was getting my mail. I'm ready to make a helping on the back of my mailbox if I can get the mail that way. Another concern of mine that I think would benefit so many people in the area would be to modify the ability of Johnson Road where it meets Germantown Pike, to be able to make a left going west. There's so much traffic coming up Johnson Road from Plymouth, and they use White's Road as a shortcut, just like the Office Park. And then they either go left to go into oftentimes the valley. There's, I don't know how many homes in there, but I'm retired, and I see maybe a thousand cars a day going on White's Road, and that's, that's not good. So maybe a traffic study could be done, and if that development does go through on, at the Office Park, maybe Mr. Payone could pay for that modification, because that's going to be more cars wanting to go west on Germantown Pike that would be going down White's Road. It's really out of control. I can't think of anything else, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is White's Road a township road? I think it is, but I'm not...
It is.
The chief is, yes, so...
It's not a state road because it doesn't have the two yellow lines.
Right, and it's not, I didn't think it was county, so the chief just confirmed. So we do have a traffic calming policy now, okay? And you can, you can go on the website and look at it and ask for a study to be done of White's Road and see what can be done. And I don't know about speed limit signs, that there are none on White's. Is the speed, would the speed limit on there be 25, do you think, chief, or I don't know?
I'm going to confer, I already wrote it down with my highway unit. I believe if there's no speed limit sign, that it's automatically 35, but I'm going to check and see exactly if we have any issues there or if speed limit signs would be helpful. But again, that's something really that a traffic engineer ultimately is going to have to look into because I'm not qualified.
It's only 800-foot-long road.
I know, it's short. Short, but busy.
Couple times, I called the police about a few different cars that really gun it. I'm talking 70 miles an hour, and it's, something's got to be done. There's plenty of roads in Plymouth Township that are township roads that have no lines that have a speed limit sign on it. And I think 25 would do the trick, because then they'll go 35.
Just like that.
He lives on White's Road, too.
Thirty years ago, the township meeting and a solicitor blew it up. What happened is, you get a ticket for going 35? No. Because there were no sidewalks at the time, it was 40 automatically. So what they said, but now since then, we have a sidewalk on both sides, not the whole block, but a sidewalk, the sidewalk they said back then. Did you guess that put a sidewalk in back then? I didn't, my neighbor got one when they built the house.
The chief's shaking his head no, sidewalks doesn't affect the speed limit, but I don't know. Okay, so...
I don't, thank you every time.
And the chief has written down your concerns about that?
Okay, chief, thanks. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
William Winchester, I live on the Belvoir Road. I was driving through Whitpain, and I noticed that they have a Pico trailer that goes under the power lines. I'm not sure how they got, there's a trail that goes along the power lines.
Yes.
I'm not sure how they got that, but I think that it would help with a lot of people with traffic, with everything else, because they could get around the township on their bike without using cars. So hopefully, we can investigate how they got it.
Okay, this is in Whitpain. Which road in Whitpain? Is that Union Meeting or...
So if you go in Whitpain on White's Road, power lines come across. If you just go slowly, you can see there's a paved blacktop, maybe six feet path that goes all the way down the power lines. Let's go.
Question, appreciate that. Any other comments from any other members who are here tonight? All right, hearing none, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for coming.